That takes place at five thirty eight P M. Madam Clerk, may you please take roll call.
This is Anna Mac, present. Moby Dune?
Here.
Nancy Breyer, absent. Robert Constant?
Present.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Here.
Hassan Sa?
Present.
Tom Wenzel?
Present.
Mister Chair, you have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, we're going to have the Fledge of Allegiance. Tom Munzer, please lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and eternal justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. You all may be seated.
Sorry about this, guys.
Recording in progress.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
We have to have Tom do the Fledge of Allegiance again? Okay. Next up is the agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the special meeting of July first, twenty twenty five, as said.
Support motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Eye. Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have public hearing and public comments. It can be about anything you want. Um, I know some of the trustees here asked for an additional minute, so I will also honor that. If we have anybody that wants to speak, please join up. I know we have also one on Zoom, so we'll start with in person. Please state your name, the city residing, and the street that you live on.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Trustee President Seba asked for an additional minute. I will honor that. I hope your family is doing well.
Thank you. Uh, Mo Seba, I live on Evangeline on the, uh, I, I am, I am the, I'm proudly the president of the Crestwood School Board. But today I speak on my own behalf, uh, as a citizen of this community. And some of the concerns that I have, based on a previous meeting that I attended, I'm just going to reiterate some of the facts from that meeting and where we stand today. Um, about a month ago, we all got together for the parking lot at the Warren Valley where Mister Isa has assumed um, a lease from the city. And the parking lot there is a problem for Mister Isa during the school year because of traffic. Now, it's a blessing for the safety of our children because it's alleviated Warren Avenue. And it's put the security of the children in a better spot than it was previous. The problem is the in and out of that parking lot and how it's affecting Mister Isa. We all know traffic is the city, the city responsibility, not the school boards, okay? Paving that parking lot, from my understanding, for Mister Isa was a part of the contractual obligation that the city got into, again, reiterating what was said, contractual obligation of the city. We stepped forward. The school board stepped forward and said, we'll be a part of that for the safety of our children and the safety of the citizens of this community. That's the only reason we did it. Not because we wanted to take money that belonged to these children, right? And apply it to something that has nothing to do with this. This is not an asset for the school district. We're not worried about assets. We're worried about the entire city. The last meeting, the city engineer came up here and said the school district should pay for the entire project. One of the city council members said, this is good for us. I don't know who us is. Us is the children of the city, the citizens of this community. All of us working together. We can't control there are three school districts in this city. We don't divide amongst three school districts. We think all these children are our children. As a citizen of this community, whether you go to D seven, Crestwood, Westwood, wherever it is, you're one of our children. We need to protect these children. I understand that the sublease is a conversation that's being had by city council. I just want to remind you that this is not about anything but the safety of these children. The financial obligation of this school district is zero if we walk away, or if you deny this, you're going to have the same problem. The insanity of thinking something different is going to happen with the continuation of the same process cannot be allowed. You are all up there for a reason. This city has had too many issues over the last few years. We need to come together. There is no south. There is no north. There is no D seven Annapolis and Crestwood. This has got to stop. This is about the children of the school district, and you guys need to come together and understand that this is about their safety. Irregardless of anything else that you may have, or any personal feelings that you may have, put the politics aside when it comes to our children. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, uh, trustee Seba. Um, anyone else in the audience? Anyone else? I have one on Zoom.
You want, you want me to zoom in?
I sometimes mute themselves.
Do it again, they, oops.
Hi.
How you doing, Mister Parish?
Good, good.
Supposed to say about toothpaste, your name, the city you reside in.
Sorry about the dog. Apologize. Um, Dean Parish, Friendly Park Street, Dearborn Heights, trying to get the dog to sit around. Um, really quickly, um, there's something called the Home Rule City Act of two seventy nine in Michigan. And outlines the fact that legislators in the state of Michigan have legislative authority, financial over.
Uh-oh.
It's probably disconnecting from his Wi-Fi. Give it a second.
Yeah, because it's in.
Hey Dana, we can't hear you. You're frozen.
He's
I don't think.
froze, but he could probably hear us because when I was freezing, I'm seeing back in state, I could hear our voice, but they couldn't hear me.
Dana, if you can hear us, we're going to pause you. Um, we can mute him. If he raises his hand back when he's unfrozen, we'll honor his, uh, his time to speak, even if we continue on here, or even if we're in discussion. Anyone else in the audience? Who? Doesn't have her hand up, but if.
You know, it might be us.
See if you can unmute her. If you can call her and tell her to unmute her.
Wait a minute, she just did.
There we go.
How you doing, ma'am? I know you asked for an additional minute, so I will honor that as well.
Thank you. I'm not sure I'm gonna need it.
Please state your name, the city residing, and the street that you live on.
Danielle Alveat, uh, Evangeline Street, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Council Chair. Good evening and good evening, respected council members. Um, I, first of all, I want to commend my colleague, Mo Seba, for what he said, even though he was saying it as a resident and not as the school board president. And I would just like to echo his words. We would like to please avoid at all costs any further delay in this project. We want the project to go through for the students, for our parents, for our district, and for the entire city because public safety is a city issue as well as a school issue. So I'm just asking that our council members, please make a decision, make the right decision today, uh, and let us move forward with this. If it does pass, we're gonna need, we're gonna be in a bit of a tango. And we want this, um, to pass today, hopefully. And then we'd be able to expedite getting the project done by the time school starts, so we're ready for the kids when they get back. Thank you very much.
Thank you. How you doing, ma'am? Are you speaking as the chief of staff or are you speaking as resident?
I'm speaking as the chief of staff, Mariana Hernandez, North Alveat Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, so as I mentioned at the last council meeting, I feel like the backup for this agenda item was added to last minute. We only received this at three o'clock today, which was not enough time for our city engineer or the administration to review properly. Uh, just on quick oversight of it, there is information in here that I feel is still missing from the backup. Um, it speaks of, um, existing, uh, granted non-exclusive license with the Isa brothers that is not part of this backup. It would be ideal to see that prior to approval. Um, it also gives access to the district with the ability to make improvements related to such as sublease and addressing the condition of the parking lot. So given the study session that we had, the city engineer had brought up various concerns with regards to the engineering, um, details of the parking lot. So I would like to request that the city engineer and administration continue to review those processes before any authorization is awarded to do any work improvements in the parking lot. I know that, uh, the city engineer has already put the bid for the repairs out, and it has been shared with the council members. So we should be getting the results for that shortly. Uh, so that's my biggest concern is that the work be done properly in the city property as well as us having sufficient information to understand, um, the implications of this resolution.
Thank you so much. Angel, sorry, are you speaking as a legal counsel or are you, uh?
Legal counsel.
Okay, please state your name, the city residing, and the street that you live on.
Uh, Gary Miyaki, uh, Dearborn Heights, Plainfield Street, uh, special legal counsel. Uh, what's before the?
Lift your mic up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Flip it up. Yep. Don't, don't actually try to play with it on or off.
Right. Um, what's before the council right now is not the full agreement. It is a resolution that consents to the license that apparently has already been granted by Isa Brothers and tries to do things to move this forward. Um, the difficulty has been that even though yourself, council chair, have done your best to try to move this forward, it seems like we are not getting cooperation, and I'm not sure exactly why. Uh, so, um, this is a step that should be taken. It will not fully grant the particular agreement that needs to be in place, which would be a sublease agreement. Um, so there needs to end up being, um, a little more, shall we say, input with regard to this particular matter, uh, from the, uh, school district's attorney. And Mister Shank, however, has reached out to me. Um, and, um, you know, I don't think that there's too much that needs to be done. There should be, there would have to be some monetary terms that ultimately would need to end up being worked out between the city and between the school district and between, uh, Isa Brothers. And frankly, in this situation, um, it appears, and council chair, if you, if, if I may, um, just for the public to know, uh, you had me become involved because it appeared that the administration was trying to impede this from going anywhere.
Hundred percent.
And that is the reason for having this resolution, also in part to make sure that we can move forward instead of getting constantly slow rolled or the city council being constantly slow rolled by the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Chair, I have a question for Mister Miyaki. So Mister Miyaki, give me one question or three, no, if you could. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Hi, Lady Tom. I hope you're feeling good. I know it's a little off topic, but I'm good. You and your family in our prayers.
Thank you. Thanks. Um, I'm, I'm confused a little bit. Um, no one cares about child safety more than me. Might be equal to me, but no one cared more than me. And I'm on board with this hundred percent voting yes on it. Uh, but I'm just a little confused about, there's a player in this deal that's involved with the golf course and banquet center. I don't want to mention a name. It said that the parking lot was not an issue as far as the original contract with Isa Brothers and it, and it, and is it, are we, we have to get permission from the Isa Brothers? I mean, is there something in, you, I know you didn't have anything to do with the contract. Well, I mean, is there something that's in the contract that says they have the right to this parking lot?
Well, Councilman.
Hundred percent?
It, it, yes, basically it's part of the lease premises. And I believe you might be speaking about the one gentleman who we all appreciate his efforts and terms of running the golf course, and he, from all counts, does a great job. But I had spoken to Mister Shank, and he had spoken to this individual and has clarified that indeed the premises do include the parking lot. And therefore, the city would have to end up giving consent for any sort of sublease involving the parking lot as well. This would not be able to be something that just would be done between Isa Brothers and the school district.
I also want to just add on that both me and Councilman Saab spoke to Mister Isa last night. And he said he one hundred percent wants this for the safety of the children. He said regardless if it's the approaches or if they're using it off of Warren, uh, uh, me and Councilman Saab actually spoke to Mister Isa yesterday. He said he wants this to be done, um, whatever it takes for the safety of the children.
Right. Sure, yeah, I'm sure he does. I mean, I'm pretty sure that's the way he feels. But I mean, is there a part in the contract that you can let me know what's specifically outlines that part in the contract?
My recollection and, uh, is, and right, right now I had eye drops because I went to an eye doctor right now, so my half my vision is not very good.
Um, know where you're coming from.
But, uh, uh, essentially, my recollection is that the uh, premises were essentially defined as being the same premises under the original agreement between the city and Isa Brothers and Revive, right? Where Revive was concessionaire, Isa Brothers was the tenant, and the city was the landlord. Um, and so therefore, it essentially covers the same premises that were included in that original agreement, namely, um, the lease agreement between Isa Brothers and um, the city includes everything that the city ended up purchasing and has a long-term lease from the county for. So, um, I could probably, if you contact me, you know, I could probably point that out.
But you, because the only thing I found in there was something to the effect of it, the building, the banquet hall, and the surrounding area, which would, would kind of sounded like it was a sidewalk area around the building. That's, it didn't say nothing about the parking lot.
You know. Entire, entire premises.
Yeah, but it didn't specify that, though. I mean, maybe you can, I mean, I'm voting yes on this. I'm just wanting to clarify this up. If you, if this is something that we need someone's permission for, it's city-owned property. And is that something that, you know, is, is it like, is the parking lot like the building? They're responsible for it, right? The builder, remodeling the building, and they own the parking lot?
Yeah, but my recollection is that we have obligations with regards to the parking lot, and that was specifically negotiated.
Parking lot?
Yes.
Yes. Maintain the parking. There was those specific terms.
That was part of what was negotiated back in twenty twenty two.
All right, yeah, maybe send me the, what? The paragraph or something, just like, you know, as you know, we, we're both talking about the same person now, yeah?
Yes, yeah.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Angel, so are you speaking as a resident or as the?
City Attorney.
As a city attorney at Corporation Council. Roger Farina, sir. Um, yeah, I just wanted to know, I did see like a tentative draft agreement from May twenty first, which had Al's asphalt pavement for the price of four hundred ninety seven thousand, three hundred eighteen dollars doing the work, and actually maybe have commenced the work. And what's confusing is, and I want to be clear, if you, I was running as a mayoral candidate, whenever a city council.
Cornerboard, not a mayoral candidate.
I, I didn't say that to you as any political, um,
Thank you.
implication. However, when the city council can go around the, the mayor administration by a claim of safety, then it violates the charter. Nine point five of the charter says that the mayor has the final, you know, say before of a contract review before it comes to council.
I mean, this, hold on, I just want to ask you just one question on that. So. The Al asphalt, you saying you got that from me?
It came from, yes, it came from the, actually, I didn't say anything came from you.
Yeah.
I'm saying that how it came from, to the, to Mister Shank, and it came from the Crestwood School. So if you're negotiating on the app.
It didn't come from.
One of us.
I know, I just want to correct you. I just want to correct you. It actually came from Mister Isa.
Correct.
And it was given to Mister Deeb. So it was, it was come, it, it came from Mister Isa. I used to ask me about it. I said, I have nothing to do with it. Send it to Mister Deeb. Thank you.
So you know about it.
So I want you to be corrected. No.
No, I'm not going to be corrected because you, you, I didn't make any mistake in what I said.
You did.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did.
I said there is a contract proposal.
I never, I never opened.
Did I put your name on it, Council Chair?
Mayoral candidate.
Did I put your name on it, Council? I'm addressing you on a separate issue as a mayoral candidate, which you just brought up, that when the, the, uh, city council can go around the mayor by putting out and claiming a safety issue as a reason to negotiate on behalf of the city, which involves a number of contracts or terms that right now, what I read, the last contract I read before this one that's produced today had Al's Asphalt Pavement Company signing an agreement and actually starting to work for four hundred ninety seven thousand, three hundred eighteen dollars when nobody had approved this or negotiated it. And if the city, if, if Crestwood is negotiating on behalf of the city, or if Isa Brothers is negotiating on behalf of the city, this Isa is going to pay for the whole parking lot. Isa Brothers is going to pay for the whole parking lot. Who owns the parking lot? Now, if we're going to come forward and put a proposal and say you, Mister Baydune, as chair, negotiated this on behalf of the city, or you hired Mister Miyaki, which is not allowed by the charter unless you want to change the charter by a resolution to change an ordinance, to change the charter, that he can act separately and apart from the administration. Uh, I say it, it's not supported by the, by the charter. And in fact, when you start saying things like, oh, you're the, you're the mayor's lawyer.
You are.
You violate the charter. The charter does not say that. You have not introduced any evidence. You have not introduced any evidence to support that the administration neg- neg- ignored anything from Crestwood, any proposals from Crestwood as to what to do with the parking lot. Not one iota of evidence, Council Chair, have you produced, except your narrative. Now you have genius here, and I'm saying it because he comes forward and says, oh, there's evidence of this. Because you say it doesn't make it true. And I'm saying that how you've not produced any evidence for safety. The kids are out of school. Monday morning, we have an RFP coming in about repairing the parking lot. They're still out there. We don't know the damages. We don't have the estimate, but we're entering into negotiations with a contract. So I'm saying it's disrespectful to the charter that you don't follow the charter all the time, just when.
The biggest charter around the city.
And Mr. Saab can say whatever he wants to say, and I respect him. I'm not saying I disrespect you, sir. But you can't pick and choose when to follow the charter. You can't pick and choose when to go around it.
And speaking about himself.
Thank you. Thank you. No problem.
Council Chair.
Hold on.
The administration's holding hard. I'm going to go to Councilman Saab and then we'll go to David.
The record. About a month ago, I asked Mr. Deeb on the record, did Mr. Isa submit to you an estimate that he got for a paving company? He's like, no. That was his exact response to me. When I asked Mr. Deeb about why is there so many elevations in that parking lot? Why can't you just, uh, do an overlay on the parking lot? He said, oh, the whole parking lot, the whole structure underground, curbs, everything need to be changed including sidewalks. I told him that bid goes out for bid. I want a copy of it. He sent it to me. I sent it to a few contractors I deal with personally. You know, some of those contractors came back and said to me, to the administration, they said if we did this project for free for the city, we wouldn't get it. It wouldn't be awarded to us. That's the wording in that contract.
Point of order, Roger. Let him finish.
Secondly, let's say word. Secondly, Mr. Deeb had approached the Isa Brothers, saying that the parking lot is going to cost anywhere between one point two to one point five million dollars. Where do you get that estimate from? What contractor has he been dealing with? Who has he been talking to? When originally, before everything started, you guys had the contract, this exact words, I was, no, we're just going to do an overlay. We're going to do a two-inch overlay cap over it. Nothing. Now you want to replace sidewalks, curbs, sewers, basins, and completely mill the parking lot? And this new bid out there. Where's the money coming from? Because I have a contractor I signed it to that does industrial size work that he said if we bid this out for free, we will not win this bid. Because you know why? It's already been handed out to someone's friends or somebody that knows somebody, just like every other contract in the city's happened. They want to play the game and play innocent.
A leave, Council Chair Saab, to his approves.
There's proof sites and emails.
Where's the proofs?
It's emails. You guys deny what you want and admit what you want, then talk about what you, that's what you want.
Put up or shut up. There's nothing here.
Put your hair.
Put your shirt up. Put up or shut up. There's nothing here. Shut up. Come on. Order, hey. Come on, no more, no more S words in here. Collar eyes. Come on.
Okay.
Hey, point of order.
Counselor Chair, if, if, if I may, it's not on, on you or your body, your honorable body to basically convince the former court counsel of what you want to do. It is your choice as the elected body that runs this city to end up doing so. So I want to basically be clear with regard to that. Secondly, again, this is a resolution that hopefully will move things forward. It is not a contract and therefore does not need to be reviewed by the mayor. And moreover, it's pretty simple. It essentially basically says the school district and Isa Brothers can continue their existing arrangement. Uh, with regard to the license, we want to make sure that everyone is able to keep doing that. And we want to move, however, to negotiate and have a sublease agreement that ends up being finalized and approved, which apparently was circulated to everyone. But, um, now seems to be kind of in a little bit of limbo, uh, at the moment. So this is a step to move the process forward. It is, uh, I think appropriate and consistent with the charter that you end up adopting this. And I think it's consistent with the policy reasons, you know, the safety of children and the safety of other people alike who will be on Warren and otherwise be in the parking lot. So, um, you know, again, this strikes me as being something that is pretty simple and hopefully people can come back and get this finalized in some way. And I would note that part of what is being hoped for with regard to this approach is that the improvements would be done by Isa Brothers or contracted by Isa Brothers, which means then the city bidding requirements and so forth don't have to end up being followed because the repair is being done by the contractor per its existing lease. And that will expedite things for the school district as well as for Isa Brothers, causing less disruption and less delay. So any other questions, I'd be glad to answer, but thank you.
I just want to put a quick statement out here. Real question. Well, I'm going to go to the trustee president after. Just a quick. Well, hang on, hang on. Point of order, please. Look, guys, I think, uh, trustee president Saban nailed it here on the head and he said, why are we playing politics? Look, guys, this is a safety issue. It's non-negotiable. People are, are lined up on Warren. I watched Officer Freyette the other day having to control the road on Warren. It was all backed up. It was so congested. This was right before the end of the year and I was thinking to myself, this is crazy. This is absolutely crazy. Uh, the truth is, we need to stop playing politics here. I don't care the relationships between Roger and Gary. I don't care about the relationship between me and the mayor. This is about our children. That's it. There is nothing else to think about here. We have a resolution before us that says we want to move this forward and allow them to figure this out. And really, all we need to do is open up the approach, let them coming in, and when the parking lot's ready to be paved, have that figured out. Let, let's just move forward. Why are we putting our children's lives in danger because we want to get all perfect and net match them? Every time something comes up from this administration, it's like a million things are wrong because the council brought it up. When they bring it up, we just have to walk it right past. I'm sorry, Roger.
No, don't be. If I can.
I'm going to give you your time. Please, point of order. I didn't interrupt you. Please don't interrupt me. I, I'm not here about who's right and who's wrong. Roger, you can be right and I'm sorry if I'm wrong. Truth is, you have children, I have children, Tom's got children, Councilman Ahmad's got children, Councilwoman's got children, Councilman's got children. Oh, we just want safety for our children. That's it. That is it. I don't care about what the, the knickknacks are. I spoke to Mr. Isa yesterday. He said, please get this done for the safety of our children.
And, and, and Counselor Chair, if I could mention one other point, it is inappropriate to bring up that anyone up on the dais is a candidate for a city. That is thoroughly inappropriate and.
Roger doesn't care to, who respect anything. Roger doesn't give the respect.
It's, it's a violation of state law to end up making statements.
Thank you. So I am going to let you speak quickly.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm now speaking as the president of the school board for Crestwood Schools. I want to clarify something. I've never met this gentleman before. Crestwood Schools did not do an RFP for that parking lot. I need to. Well, I need to make sure that it's clear because the accusation was made or the implication of an accusation was made that we handed over an RFP. The only RFP we have done is to our parking lot and the renovations to our parking lot. And as for the politics, this is disgusting. It's absolutely disgusting. I don't play politics. I am not a politician. I never want to be a politician. The moment that you put our children at stake because of a policy between this mayor and this city council is offensive to me as a citizen, is definitely offensive to me as a president of the school board. Your accusations of an RFP from us were absolutely incorrect and I don't know where you got it and you should take it back.
Well, let me address it. Let me, let me address you, sir. I've been a chair.
By the way.
I've been, I've been.
I'm going to let you get to that.
Hold on, hold on. Have to address what he just spoke.
Okay. I, I'm going to give you that moment, but I want you to know that this is not a, you are not speaking to, trust you said, you're speaking to the chair.
I'm looking at you and I'm speaking to you.
So no, you said you want to address them. There's no.
Well, I'm going to address what was said because I have children too. And I've been a chair of a school board. I would never come forward and speak and then make it as a, as a life-saving issue of children because I'm a school board chair. As a former school board chair for five years, I know what I'm talking about. And if I have a contract in front of me that names a company specifically is what I cited, then we need to understand how did that company be proposed as one to do the project of the parking lot involved in the contract. You're interrupting me. You said that you wouldn't interrupt me. Now, the second thing is that Mr. Miyaki is, is wrong because I got a letter from Shank that said they didn't know anything about this new contract that, and representing the Isa Brothers. And in fact, he said that Mr. Miyaki called him. He did not call Mr. Miyaki. And he will return the call, he said, of Mr. Miyaki, but he didn't initiate any contact with him. He's negotiating with us and talking with us. And if we come forward and put out a narrative that the children's safety at issue, the children are out of school right now. Let's step back and look at this. It's not politics. It's safety, it's production, it's protection of the city and the residents. So when you come up and put out, no, you know, you're, I don't know you. Well, come, you can meet me anytime. Because I'll be clear.
Point of order. Point of order.
That I expect, and I've worked as a student.
You need to work the line.
Director, and I know that how when you do that, you go to your board. Where's the vote of the board? Where's the vote of the school board across with that they, they, they put this in writing and brought it forward, the, the membership of that school board and there's a vote to show us. Where's the contract that says this company can come in? What's an Al's Asphalt Pavement and do work? And why are they proposed as a company to work on this project?
They did not come from the school.
And it came.
Not come from the school.
Came in a contract.
And kidnapped.
That was sent to the Isa Brothers lawyers. The other thing I would say is that the claim that how Mr. Mr., uh, sorry, engineer Deeb has any sidewalks involved in it, he, it, it, it's no sidewalks involved in it. So I don't know where Mr. Saab is getting his, not accurate, not, I don't know.
Probably never read the bid he put out.
I'm going to go to Mr. Parrish since he was raising his hand. And I know he wanted to speak a little bit and I think he just got back on. So let's get into his time to speak real quick.
Thank, thank you, uh, uh, Council Chair. Dana Parrish, Greenlee Park Street, Dearborn Heights.
You have two minutes.
Yes. All right. This is not a net particular issue, but, um, I wanted to speak about, uh, uh, actually has to do with Home Rule City Act, uh, two seventy-nine. And it talks about the legislative body within the state of Michigan has the legislative authority, financial oversight and power to investigate regardless as to what the charter says. Basically, you have the ability for oversight within the city of Dearborn Heights, regardless as to what our, uh, charter says in the city. So keep that in mind. You can subpoena, you can do all the things that you need to do to have oversight within the city. We need to fix our charter, but you have the ability for oversight. Um, I want to address a few things about, um, the fire station situation. I was, I read some emails. Um, I know that there's some council people that were very concerned about the fire station. I'm concerned about it as well. And some council people want to be, uh, kept up to date as to what's going on with meetings. They don't want to be, in particular, they don't want to be, uh, involved in negotiations with contracts, but they want to know what's going on as far as meetings are concerned. Um, I think that's a fair want. That's a fair request. Um, I don't think that's overstepping their legislative bounds. As long as they're not going out saying, I want to sit there and be involved in a contract negotiation. If they want to listen, they want to be a part of what's going on at meetings, they should be allowed to do that. That's transparency. And that's part of legislative, uh, responsibility. That's part of legislative oversight. They cannot be in the bid process. They can't be in the, in any of the contractual process. To say that they have a place to just wait until a contract comes out, it's not right. They have oversight. They have the ability to sit and watch what's going on. They can sit there, watch and, and not be a participant in the, in the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Oh, yeah, you got a standing ovation there today.
Counselor Chair.
Yes.
One side, I'd, I'd like to address this president, Mr. Parrish. Thank you for your, uh, for your time. Roger, maybe you should read the, uh, charter one more time.
Sure.
Um, but let me, uh, let me just clarify one thing about the fire station. When I voted on it a couple of weeks ago, my condition was I want to be involved throughout the whole entire process for transparency for the residents. All of a sudden, they're having secret meetings that tells me stay in my lane and check your plan, menu in your place. You're not going to attend any of these meetings. Because apparently we already got some contractors lined up, it sounds like. Before the bids, before the contract is even out or anything.
It was at the meeting. I don't know.
Right. Man, you know, around this community here, you, you hear a lot and it comes right back.
Yeah.
Know that.
Like there's eyes and ears everywhere.
Okay, guys, we're not talking about the fire station here. We have a resolution on the table. I want to hear from anybody else. If not, I want to take this to a vote. Uh, but miss, I mean, I mean, really, she wants to say something. Quickly, please.
Really quickly. So the first presentation to this, um, body was on April twenty, near afternoon, Whitefield Street, Dearborn Heights. So this body, there was a presentation on April twenty-first of this year. Then there was, it went to a study session so you guys could make sure that you had all the information you needed to make the right decision and make sure you're protecting the city as well as the, the, our students. Um, then you guys received, from my understanding, what I had asked you, the, the contract on May thirty-first. It is July first. Are you telling me that you don't, administration doesn't have the information, all the information they needed, taking them all this time? That every time it comes in front of you guys, you need to, they, they don't have everything. They don't have everything they need. I'm sick of the games myself as well. And I'm speaking as a parent, as a resident, as somebody who lives right by Riverside and has to watch our kids and our parents kind of fight to get their kids safely to school because it's, it's, it's not. It's, it's a dangerous situation. Um, second of all, from somebody who has attended both meetings, city council as well as, uh, school board meetings, the, the school board cannot vote on something that this, this body has not voted on. We can't vote to do anything until you guys give us the, we can even do, why would we go and do anything without knowing that we were even, that you guys were not going to approve it? We have to know that you voted yes before we would even waste our time doing anything with, with bids or whatever. So, thank you.
How you doing, man?
Count, hello, council. I'm speaking as a resident this evening. My name is Lisa Hicks Clayton. I live on Gully Road in Dearborn Heights. Um, I'm speaking as a concerned resident and also a parent. My youngest went through the Crestwood School District from kindergarten on up. I will tell you, living through the days of Riverside Middle School pickup and drop-off is horrendous and scary for everyone. I would also say, this has been brought before the council and I commend the council for bringing it back because absolutely you should vote on this. And I do agree, by the way, and support what these school trustee, the school board members trustee have said this evening. This is about safety. It should never be about politics. This is about children, their lives. We've seen it too many times. That's all I'm going to say to you. Please vote on this. I hope we, you know, we all can have some support to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Lynn Senia. I am talking as a resident on Kennedy Street and as a former Crestwood School Board member. The reason I got on the school board was because of the children's safety. Around my house, I live at Kennedy and Beach Daily. As you also know, the speed limit, we were instrumental in, um, having that light, light work from seven in the morning till seven at night and putting in, I think, the only school zone area in the city. For a while, the traffic went down and now it's more than what it used to be. I'm not on Warren, but I've heard stories about Warren. I can tell you in front of my house again, there is an enormous amount of parents that pick up there because of the, um, the traffic on Warren. So I am up here asking you to protect our children.
All right, guys, we have a resolution that we haven't even read yet. Can I get somebody to read this resolution?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman, uh, Ahmad.
The whole thing. Uh, resolution consenting to license for Crestwood School District to use portions of Warren Valley Golf Course Parking Lot. Whereas in August twenty twenty-two, the city entered into the lease and concession agreement between itself a- as landlord, Isa Brothers LLC as tenant and Revive Golf Management LLC as concession year, uh, related to the lease of the premises commonly known as the Warren Valley Golf Course. Whereas Isa Brothers LLC has granted the Crestwood School District a non-exclusive license to use portions of the Golf Course Parking Lot for parking by those affiliated with the district. Whereas by doing so, Isa Brothers LLC and the district have entered to an, an arrangement that benefits the district by addressing in part the limited parking available at Riverside Middle School. Whereas this arrangement further benefits the city, the district and those traveling on Warren Avenue by decreasing the hazards associated with limited parking and vehicular congestion on Warren Avenue, thus enhancing the safety of the city's residents, the district's residents and of those traveling on Warren Avenue. Whereas, and most notably, this arrangement enhances the safety of schoolchildren who are tragically, tragically so very vulnerable to motor vehicle accidents. Whereas the city's consent to this non-exclusive license arrangement is required by section twelve of the agreement. Whereas efforts have been undertaken. Whereas efforts have been undertaken to reach a written agreement providing the district uh, with a non-exclusive sublease to use portions of the golf course parking law for parking by those affiliated with the district, providing the district with the ability to make improvements related to such a sublease, addressing the condition of the parking law and otherwise addressing the obligations of the parties and the district related to such a sublease. Whereas the details of such a written sublease agreement have yet to be fully determined. Whereas the city's consent to such a written sublease agreement is also required by section twelve of the agreement. Whereas until such a written sublease agreement can be finalized, the continuation of the non-inclusive license granted by Isa Brothers LLC to the district should continue in order to enhance the safety of the city's resident, the district's resident and of those traveling on Warren Avenue. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council, the city of Dearborn Heights adopts this resolution consenting to license for Crestwood School District to use portions of Warren Valley Golf Course Parking Law. Hereafter resolution, by adopting this resolution, consents on the city behalf pursuant to section twelve of the agreement to the non-exclusive license granted by Isa Brothers LLC to the Crestwood School District for the district to use portions of the golf course parking law for parking by those affiliated with, with the district. This consent shall only be valid for the period from July first, twenty twenty-five through June period, twenty twenty-six. However, this consent shall end once a written agreement providing the district with a non-exclusive sublease to use portions of the golf course parking law for parking by those affiliated with the district is otherwise approved and executed by Isa Brothers LLC. The district and the city, nothing stated in this resolution shall be construed or to be consent to such a sublease and any such consent to such a sublease shall have to be otherwise granted by the city council in another motion or resolution. C, authorizes and directs special legal counsel Gary T. Miyaki want to present the city council with respect into the aforementioned license and any proposed sublease. Two, to perform all necessary legal services that are otherwise consistent with this resolution and further direction from the city council. And D declares that the city council have previously appropriately retained special legal counsel, but that resolution shall be deemed and treated as a further independent act of retention of special legal counsel by the city council pursuant to city charter section five one, five point one three J, in, in the unlikely event that any previous act of retention may be ruled to be ineffective.
As outlined in nine A.
As outlined in nine A.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Sab. I know we've had a lot of discussions on this, just to give some quick clarification that this is simply giving and honoring what you guys want to do, but obviously in twenty twenty-six, uh, let's just say there is no agreement and this would actually have to be renewed. Is that correct, Gary?
Yes, uh, whenever there is anything affecting an interest in land that is more than one year, it has to end up actually being in a written agreement. This is a resolution and allows that to continue. You could always renew it again, but hopefully there will be a sublease and everything will be good to go.
All right. Once this is a sublease, this is obviously absolutely correct.
That is correct.
Okay.
Council Chair.
No, that's true. Um, so this resolution, it just gives permission to have this thing start going, any permission that the city has to give to make this thing start ball rolling.
Oh, correct.
That, that's all this is. And it doesn't specify sidewalks or the thickness or milling or anything like that. So, I mean, this is like a no-brainer here. Um, but this, the, uh, sublease agreement approval, is that gonna be, is that gonna be approved by city council?
Yes.
It says right here. In the future, when, once it's, once it's written and we can review it, then that's got all the nuts and bolts in it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, just for the record, um, the paragraphs that state that Mr. Miyaki can circumvent the corporation council and negotiate on behalf of the city remains a violation of the federal injunction interfering with the corporation council performing the duties and functions. Um, I think it's more, it's not just a document that says it gives you permission to go forward with something. I think it's, it's harmful. It's, it's violative. The administration is in opposition to this and it circumvents the administration and the mayor's office. So I just want for the record to understand that, that this resolution is opposed by the mayor, opposed by the administration for the record.
Uh, I got a question from Gary. I know I never asked you this. Can you give me, uh, your thoughts on the fact that the federal judge allowed Gary Miyaki to allow the city council to intervene as a defendant with him as a special legal counsel? Is that correct, Gary?
No.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. No, that is not correct. The federal judge allowed the city council to be, Gary Miyaki was not allowed into the case. He's coming in because the judge said it's up to circuit court to decide the issue, whether you can get your own counsel or not. But that was not approved by the court, by the, uh, the federal judge in the matter. So it has not been approved and that's not correct what he said.
Thank you, Gary. Question. I'm just curious. Roger continues to say that you say something else. I don't know. I think since they're public legal, that the residents know.
No, but, but, I think it's very clear. The court has allowed the city council to intervene as an intervening defendant. I am representing the city council that has been completely allowed and in terms of the more general point than Mr. Farina. And again, I don't refer to him as the city attorney or court counsel. As far as I'm concerned, he's, his former office is vacant. I just wanna be clear. Um, to the larger point, this issue was addressed in the underlying litigation years ago that Mr. Shank represented this honorable body against Mayor Pletka. And I think it's just, it's, 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 it's an issue that has been decided. And I would be very happy if there was a functioning administration with a functioning actual corporation council that's been appointed by the mayor and approved by this body, which is the way it's supposed to work. And then there would be no need for me to have to end up being pulled in on stuff. But the reason you had me come in is because nothing was getting done. It gets, always gets slow rolled. There's always an impediment. It's like the short-term rentals ordinance. It comes before the planning commission. Because Mr. Farina and the administration failed to put something together that actually could work and is consistent with the wishes of this body, I get the direction to end up putting that together. I put that together, this honorable body unanimously approves it. I go to the planning commission, Mr. Farina at the last minute comes up and says, there are a whole bunch of these problems, none of which are really real problems. But, and then tries to impede and tries to get the planning commission not to do what your honorable body passed. This is a pattern of this kind of hindrance and impediments by this administration. And frankly, I think as a body, you have shown an incredible amount of patience in dealing with this and should be applauded. I just don't know that the residents necessarily understand that this is just unbelievable. And, and nothing, you know, again, remember, I've served in four different administrations, including this one. I've never seen anything like this.
Thank you.
All right, motion made by. Council Chair, just, I just wanna put something for the record about this contract. The contract of Al's or A1's or whatever it is came through the Isa brothers because it was said that the parking lot was gonna cost over a million dollars. He went out and got a bit of his own and submitted it through his attorney to Mr. Deeb, to rest of the city. It was not the school board that submitted this contract or a bid. This was a estimate, given how much the parking lot would cost milled for that much, not an overlay compared to the price that the city's trying to rip the residents off with.
In, 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 that's my understanding as well. And the statements made by the school board president are, as far as I can tell, well-founded. Thank you.
Right. It's just politics they're playing.
Maybe, maybe Mr. Isa sent it to the mayor. That's how it got to City Hall, but.
I, I had a separation of powers issue.
Yep, let's take a.
All right, let's take a initial vote, please. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those oppose? Guys have unanimously once again.
Good night.
Next up, we're gonna take it over to, I'm gonna go shoot the public comments. Public comments. Any public comments on the audience? Anyone on Zoom?
Motion adjourned.
And I, well, I'm gonna give a moment for council members, councilman. County officer.
Council Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like you, I sent an email. I'd like to schedule a study session regarding, uh, poor quality of this park we just built back here. And I'd like to have every director in the city present.
Okay, I'll schedule something to you.
Too. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other announcements?
Motion.
Being none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Adjourned.
Second. Motion to adjourn by Councilman, uh, Constant, seconded by Councilman Ahmad.
They get called.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Eye.
Those oppose? The eyes have it, motion carries. Was that not you? I'm sorry.
Recording stopped.
Motion off.